Was questioning whether the rest of the boards can entice business by reducing the fees and stuff.
Mm-hmm. But, uh... Do you want? Let me know when you're up.
You're up.
Brian, okay. Motion to open the Groveplanning Board meeting at nineteen fifty hours? Seven fifty?
So motion.
Second.
All favors, do I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, so the meeting open. Okay, um, get a handwritten agenda tonight, or?
No.
Okay.
Chesterton is first, and then Scott.
So, where are we with Chesterton? Let's, uh, come on up to the head table.
This is a memo that we've drafted today in regards to the Chesterton project.
Okay.
After several meetings and a couple of go-arounds with a contractor and consultant, we've cobbled together enough information where we feel comfortable we can recommend approval of the site plan application.
Yeah.
We just recently met with the Conservation Commission last week, and they agreed to draft a memo incorporating the new plan into their decision so that both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission will be dealing with the same set of drawings as they move forward to construction. And we've included six conditions that we feel are appropriate. Basically, it's restriping the parking lot so that handicap spots are in the appropriate positions.
Mm-hmm.
There's a strip of pavement to be removed on the parking lot so that they can get a no-dead increase in impervious area. Some other housekeeping items, and then a double grate catch basin is to be installed on the new catch basin at the eastern corner of the parking lot. And of course, that needs to be completed before they can really start doing a lot of building construction so that we can accommodate the drainage during the work.
Is that on a steep slope, or is it a sloping?
Yeah, it's graded to be sort of a funnel.
Okay.
So it has to work.
The grate itself, will it have the shovel-type opening throats? Or will it be a crossbar, or just a standard type B?
Yeah, the drain pipe that it's connected to has a capacity of about eight CFS. If you only have a single grate, you're only going to get about two CFS out of it. So that's the throttle. So we recommended that they increase that and allow-
To a double grate, yeah.
Allow more water to pass, and then reduce ponding because they've been having some ponding issues in large storms, so. Conservation Commission was on board with that, and, uh, you know, I briefed the parties on what the conditions might be, but they've addressed all the recommendations that we had back in our review letter.
Okay, so this is today, and so you guys are all set with this?
Yes.
Okay. And the new revisions, are they going into the plans, or just housekeeping items?
Just conditions.
Just conditions, okay.
You know, it really wasn't worth having a new set of plans revised and submitted and reviewed again. I mean, I think these are minor housekeeping items.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay, so where are we with the, uh, yeah, there was a, is the issue of the review be squared away?
I think that'll be taken care of. I won't speak for Neil, but I still have him on the phone today, and he has started those approvals in the works, so we should have that to you in a week or so.
Okay, you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. Yeah, that's well squared.
Yes.
Different one. Okay, all right. Do you have an estimated time on that? Estimated time for the review fees to be squared away?
Oh, yes, I've submitted for the check already.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So it's, oh, it's usually Friday they give you checks, I don't know, the next Friday or Monday.
Okay, that's got to go through the town process?
Right.
Okay.
Just give me a call because I need to turn paperwork in with the check to get it, uh...
Is that morning, afternoon?
Well, it's usually late morning by the time the mail gets up here from, uh...
Yeah, probably won't matter with the holiday.
No, just him for the paperwork.
I'm available anytime, don't worry.
Yeah, so if you get in the morning, you can catch him before she gets out of here.
Okay.
That's all, and if not, then you're into...
Okay.
Yeah, then you're into that. Okay. Board comfortable, any questions with the recommendations?
No.
Okay. Fly a motion to approve site plan review for eight sixty sale.
So motion.
Corrections.
Second.
All favors, do I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous. Show the approval of site plan review with the corrections, modifications, as noted in today's review date of June twenty-three, two thousand fifteen. Did you put this in a signature format?
For your endorsement?
Yeah.
No, it was a, really another review letter with recommendations from us. I can put it in that format if you'd like.
A single-page letter if you want with the, uh, the housekeeping items, what do you got a timeline on that?
Yeah, the drainage, they've got to do right away because, you know, they've been given permission to start the building construction, but...
So this is going to be an inspect and then a progress and then inspect as we go for the final housekeeping items on these? The drainage you mentioned.
Uh, well, that could be just incorporated into your decision.
Right, right. So, yeah, we should get a decision format.
Then I'll add that signature sheet.
Now, site plan, there's no time clock, so... On that, so you're good, good to go. So, on that. Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you thank the folks at Chesterton for us, Neil?
Hello.
You work very well with the town of Groveplanning. Greatly appreciate it. Okay, who's next?
This is Scott Green.
Come on, Scott.
Sunset Circle. Nope, Scott, Scott Green, Taylor. And, uh, Taylor, while you're here, you can tell Lisa too, Bob can't sit.
Yeah, we're worried.
But Jim, his wife, had to go in the hospital, and we're not going to have a quorum to hear that.
So what do you get, what are you guys here for?
I'm here for Lot Six, the retaining wall and drainage issues.
Okay.
I can grab Lisa real quick if you want.
Well, I was just curious on that because we don't have a...
So we can't address any of this, correct?
Yeah, not without a, not without a form, but have you submitted? Do you have your stuff based so we can submit it for review?
If you want.
So... Hey, Scott, what do we have to with you?
You just gave me a yes vote or something? Wait.
Our draft decision.
This is amended just for a couple of minor items. The highlight you see is either for areas to be filled in.
Before we start that, Alan, just to rest assured, I'll be turning this check in tomorrow, and the bills will go out. Yeah, it's this week that they go out, so you're all set.
Yeah, they go out today.
Yeah.
I mean, this week.
Go ahead, Sandy.
This is an updated draft of memorandum of decision that we prepared back in April.
Yeah.
The highlighted items are either to be filled in at the time of the vote or signature, or have been changed since we last saw it. So basically, we've updated the revision date of the current drawings, and then we added in some additional language about the binder course of paving to be in compliance with...
Yeah, where was that, um, why was that, Alan?
We had a discussion with Mr. O'Hanley. We were talking about the timeframe to build the subdivision roadway and the likes, and we wanted to make sure, I mean, it's already in the code, it's already in subdivision rules.
Right.
But we wanted to make sure that it was understood that the binder needs to season over the winter, so...
Oh, so we did it into a decision off the, off the...
We referenced, we referenced the article, and then we also included some of the language so that it was clear.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, I thought that was pretty standard.
Just to make it clear, yeah.
And then we also inserted language about the slope easement, which is a new development, you know, to allow the, the road to be built, a lot of retaining wall.
Yeah, which, uh, what article was that?
So that is item number, uh, should be number two.
Two? Okay.
The conditions, so that will be executed and recorded at the same time as the definitive plan.
Okay. And where's the wall and fence, is that referenced in here?
There is no retaining wall, no.
No, I mean the, for the Georges, there's a wall and a fence.
That's in the actual deed thing, that's already been drawn up for.
Okay.
That's literally listed in there.
So you got it in with the easement. Do you have a sub copy of the, of that?
I think he has a copy.
I do, but of course, I'm not going to be able to find it.
Anybody see anything else in the draft?
No, it looks good.
We just, we told Scott, and he has to communicate with Bob-
Yeah.
-on any major...
All phases of construction.
Yeah, phases of construction.
Also, Scott, you're going to need to deposit at least twenty-eight hundred dollars in there for site fees for me going up there into the town, and then we'll draw from that.
Okay.
If there's anything left over, you'll get it back, if there isn't, then I...
Okay. This doesn't reference the wall and the fence, it does the easement though. So, do you have this on the plan?
He's talking, the fabric area where the wall was going to go?
No, no, where the, where the easement's going? Oh, coming in on, uh, over here, oh, in the Georges, there's going to be a stone wall built and then a, and then a fence. So the stone wall faces and then the fence is behind it for the noise, but I don't, it's not on this plan, so it must, what do you get it on a sheet?
Yeah, this proposed vinyl fence here.
Yeah, and the wall.
This drawing shows the portion of the property that's affected.
And where's the wall?
Uh, the stone wall?
Yeah.
In the back along this property line here, just to help make up the grade.
Yeah, you're going to have the, the wall here though, too, and in front of the fence because it's a vinyl, and with the, somebody slips and right into it. Just a, you know, two footer. Supposed to be a two-foot wall.
I don't have a problem, Tony asked me to put a little wall in, and I'll do that for him, so that's not a big deal.
Can we, can we note that somewhere?
You noted it in the decision?
In the draft form?
I just haven't been into it.
There is a one minor drafting change to be made to this drawing, as a matter of fact, so we can have the consultant.
I don't care where it, where it ends up.
We can have the consultant do it.
Either in here or in there, but yeah, just a little two footer, you know what I mean?
It might notate it in the, it might be easier just to notate it in that.
In the easement?
Easement, then.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I agree. So, so just to be clear-
Two-foot stone wall.
It's just a two-foot stone wall because, you know, if you're coming in-
Yep.
You make a wrong turn, you got to wipe the fence out.
You got to.
Have a plow, blade, you know, not take a whole line of fence out. So just full length down and then it's in there for the fence, and yeah, that, that's fine.
Just for clarity, we were pointing out on that drawing I have open-
Yeah.
There are two adjacent houses that are labeled eight seventy Salem Street. So obviously, we know one is an error because the easement goes with eight seventy-four, so...
Yeah.
It's just a minor drafting change, and again, it's a housekeeping item, but-
Right.
We'll have the consultant clean that up.
Okay. That's good.
Wants to add the fence, he can add the fence.
Yeah.
So we'll have it, we'll have it belts and suspenders.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, motion approved draft with changes, including walls and fence?
So motion.
Second.
All favors, do I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous. Okay. We can endorse one draft copy for you, and then you can just, the signature page, do you have a different? Because you're going to roll it right in.
Yeah, we just need to, I mean, we can sign the decision and the plan all at the same time after the expiration of the...
You want the time clock going though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So, can you, can you attach a tomorrow? Can you get a, if he picks it up?
Clean one?
Yeah.
I can email it or deliver it, whatever you need.
Well, what I'm saying is, is if we, if we sign the, um, the signature sheet, we're not, do you have one without the draft on it? Just for timestamping?
Yeah, we can tear it off. Tear the header off.
We should endorse one.
And just to be clear, we, I think you also need to make a vote on the land disturbance application now that we've agreed on the bond amount.
What is the bond amount?
Three hundred and fifty-four, was it?
It's bigger than that, you know.
Uh, no, five hundred and fifty-four.
I was going to say it was kind of light, especially for you.
He's going to build Kravchuk something.
Right, I've got, I've got cows on my mind, yeah, but his was two ninety-five or something like that.
Okay, down the line, I dated it.
Yep.
The other change was we removed Andrea from the list.
Remove what?
Andrea from the list.
Oh, oh, oh.
At the time, she wasn't a member.
I wasn't even thinking, jeez.
And I had a discussion with Mr. Green's bond person yesterday, going over some of the conditions and amounts and things, and I'm assuming he's satisfied, so the G-one and G-two documents can be endorsed as well.
I want to need a motion for the site disturbance.
So motion.
Second.
All favors, do I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous.
Do you want me to white out the draft and give it to him tomorrow so he can timestamp it?
Either that or he can do it, and he'll give it to Scott, and Scott can timestamp it with the clerk.
Give him this one.
Yeah. There's a live copy, don't lose it.
So what do I do with this?
You're going to take that or...
You need to white out the draft on the, all, all the pages of...
Well, you're going to get the, the final copy from, from you, right?
Yeah, I, like I said, I just assumed that we would fill everything in at the end.
Right, so...
We don't know what the vote is going to be before I prepare it, so...
Right, right, so...
Just get this blanked out? The draft?
So, he's going to print you out a clean copy-
Yeah.
But that signature sheet, it's got to get stapled with it.
Yeah, and I'll just white out the draft.
So give it over to him, or Callan, and Alan will take it, give it back to you, you run it into the clerk.
All right, he'll run it down.
Yeah, before she closes, whatever day that is. You're going to be able to get it down?
Yeah, tomorrow we'll get it down.
Okay.
But the main thing to keep clear in your head is, anything you do out there has to be notified to me in advance, and I have to look at it before it's buried, otherwise, we don't accept it.
Do I have to dig up the water lines I put in?
With bigger ones, yeah.
No, but you stripped it, how do we know you didn't bury, bury stumps? We don't know anything there.
I'll give you my fee that I paid for the trailers.
Well, see, that's what, that's what he's trying to say, though, you didn't, you didn't call him, I mean, he should...
I, I can verify logs, I can't verify stumps.
I can, because the trailers, I'll show the trailers.
I've got...
I do actually have pictures.
I've got nine pictures I took today, and I'll keep a booklet on it.
Document those, submit them. Yeah, print them, uh, print the stump pictures.
Let me see what I got, yeah.
Okay, how soon can you get this easement retooled to include the fence full length and in the...
I'll ask Bill to do it tomorrow.
Okay, so get all that together.
He's local, he's right up on, he's right in West Newbury.
Okay, got it.
All right.
So that'll be elsewhere. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
So the clerk starts...
Tomorrow, well, as soon as he stamps it, in one day is rock and roll.
You'll have that, you'll pick that up, and we'll get this over to him.
Yeah. Don't forget this, though, because this is, you're going to reference this.
Yeah, that has to go with that, right.
Right, but you're going to reference it in that.
In this decision?
The decision references this.
Who, let me just get this straight here, is the decision in the, uh, this is the decision, right?
Right.
Right.
You want this back?
For this going into the town tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's referencing this easement.
Okay.
So this easement has got to be tuned up-
Okay.
At the roughly the same time.
That gets stapled to this, you're saying?
You, you can.
Yeah, that-
Or it can go in-
That can be signed. The only condition is that the signed plans and the signed easement get recorded together.
Recorded together, so that can get recorded at that time.
You've got twenty-one days to perfect that.
Right, but the language is going to change.
Right.
So you got to have it changed at the same time that that hits the time clock to show it accurate, not the recording date, I'm not worried about the, uh, I'm worried about the language.
Yeah, we just refer to a slope easement from Georges, so...
Right, but he's referring to, but this is going to be it, so he knows where he's going, so you're just going to get that done tomorrow, include the fence full length and the stone wall, and that's all it's got to go in there.
And then call me, Scott, when you're going to do the curb cut.
Curb cut.
Call Bob, he can tell me.
Great.
Because we want the curb and deliver it back to the highway garage.
Okay.
You know, the ones you've taken out?
Taken out, oh, you do want them back.
Huh?
You do want them back.
Oh, yeah, we take them, yeah.
He owns them.
We own, it's ours.
Those were going to be in, that was going to be part of the development. Thanks.
So you've got to be in communication with Bob.
Thank you.
Alan, just stick around for one minute with Kravchuk, too. Uh, Taylor, yeah, uh, do you have a question or anything?
Uh, no, basically, I just wanted to look for, no, we're not going to do anything tonight, but, um, do you know when your next meeting is?
I don't know what, what exactly, you know, just before we get rolling, what were you trying to do? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, just add, I don't even know what the, what it is.
Just fix it, have him email it to me.
So the retaining wall's going in, you're just going to show us how to do it?
We're here to discuss all the way.
It's not coming in?
I, I'm not going to get into that without a...
You got a set of plans? Because it shows it on the plan, so are you asking for a modification on the plan?
I'm, I'm, no, this is Lisa's deal, I'm just here to check for questions.
Well, I'm, I'm here to, I'm, I'm asking you a technical question. You're the engineer designing the walls, is the wall going in or the wall not going?
That's what we're here to discuss with the planning board.
What is your proposal?
When Jim's here and all of us...
So then you're requesting a modification to the plan? So we'll have to have it reviewed?
Let me correct Lisa.
Well, yeah, I think they're trying to dodge the topic and say they want to install gutters or something to direct water around.
It's on the plan. It's on the plan. Can't do that. You got to, if you're going to do that, then you got to go through a full-blown modification of the plan and submit it for major minor change, and drainage is...
They're going to say, oh, let slap some gutters on, and that's just going to resolve the issue.
It's on the plan, you got to build it.
Again, they're probably going to say, oh, just direct it towards the driveway and not be putting in infiltration check.
There's, there's a lot of cleanup work to be done out there.
Walter, we're not going to talk about it at all until we get a full board. So don't ask any questions now, wait till the full board, which is Jim, you and I.
Yeah.
This is useless, this is useless.
Yeah, see, I, I don't know, Jim, Bob can't sit in on this.
Right, so you don't have a quorum.
Oh, we want to do the day.
So, we, we got a letter, and that's, I, I see the letter, but there was, you know, what agreement you have with, to answer that part of it.
So you can't talk about any substance of this until you reschedule the meeting, you have a quorum.
No, but what I was saying, what I was trying to get out of Taylor, that if he's submitting a change to the plan-
We're not submitting anything.
He said he was submitting a change to the plan.
I said we're not submitting anything without a quorum, is what I told you.
Okay, that's, all right. Are you intending with a quorum to submit an engineering plan for change?
We will come back and submit something to, um...
But you don't know what it is?
Walter will discuss this with a quorum.
Or give us a continuation date, and we'll come back and talk to you about it.
Uh, you know, I, I think you can say what the subject matter is, because if you're submitting a change, anyone that submits a change to a plan that's already been approved-
We don't think the change is necessary at this time, and I'm not going to talk about why, because you don't have a quorum to have a conversation about it.
Then why are you here?
Because we're here to have a conversation with the planning board with a quorum.
Okay, have a nice day, we'll see you later.
We'd like to know when you're continuing meeting us.
Uh, we don't know yet, so we'll let you know, or you can call later.
Email and you'll follow.
Taylor, I can email you when I find out one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Kravchuk.
Just doing the, uh, I thought he was a drop and go.
No. I had received late this afternoon a letter of credit from the bank, a draft, and there's a couple of things we just need to change on the draft copy, and, uh...
May need to change, it, just at first read, it didn't sound right, but...
Alan's going to scrutinize and email me.
Okay.
And I'll get back to the bank with it.
Well, I wanted to give him back what they gave me.
The main question Carl has, if he can start work on it, and my opinion is, yes, he just can't. The bond has to be in place before he gets a foundation permit, so he can start work on the roadway and stuff now.
Do you guys want to go?
Copy of what?
The letter of credit, I got it on my computer, you know.
When I read it, that first condition looks like it's required for them to issue the letter of credit, and I don't think that was the intent.
Originally, this was supposed to be to show they're giving it, and this part down here is to show if he reneges on anything, we can take from it with the majority of the board. But the wording needs to be changed a little.
Who did this? O'Hanley? I don't think they've ever done one of this.
At Bank America, I downloaded a form that Georgetown used and sent it to them.
Yeah.
And, uh...
So you're going with the letter of credit versus a passbook, is what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had those in the past.
It's perfectly acceptable.
No, it's one, it's one of the three forms, and that, my, my question was for clarity, not for...
Yeah, so when I read this the first time, they'll establish the letter of credit if you sign a document saying that Carl has failed to complete the subdivision.
Yeah, I took a different...
I don't think that's the way it's intended.
That doesn't work that way. Especially since you're going to be drawing it.
If I fail, they'll pay you the money.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I, that's the way I read it.
The major clause is he's not going to do it within a year completion. We need to string that out to about two or three years.
What's your, what's your timeline coming?
Yeah, yeah.
Because he can't put the final hot top for a year after he does it.
Well, that's, then it gets dwindled down, but what's the, um, what's your timeline, Carl?
I'm pretty much ready to start.
No, I mean for start to finish is a...
Oh, three months for the binder, to get the binder down, three months or less.
And then on the building and the...
Uh, the building?
Let me explain, Carl, we're not going to let you put the finish coat on until all the construction's done on both houses.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, because you don't want to rip it up.
Yeah, you have to let it season and...
All your building has to be done on the binder, and then we'll let you put the final coat down.
I, all right, I, I was planning on maybe selling one lot, so I don't know what the building is going to be sold on.
Well, you could sell, you could sell a lot, but you have, they won't let you finish the, put the finish on.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. So the way around that is, is if you get down to the, so it sounds like that could be a time, right, a couple of years?
To get the finish coat?
Yeah.
I suppose it could be, but I don't really see it being that long, but...
It won't hurt to put two years, and then if it's done before then.
I have a method. So, um, one of the things that typically we do, because the last two things are going to be your finish coat and your asbills. Okay, you have a big number here. Okay, so typically what people do with a letter of credit? Okay, it gets reduced down, cause they're gonna be paying this out as it goes. When you get down to the final numbers, you're gonna need the asbill, the finish coat, whatever else is left. Okay, onto that, that would get converted, whatever that is, to a passbook. This dumps, that stays, you put down the finish, that gets withdrawn the same day. You put the, the asbills, that gets done out, so, so you won't have a big number here. Instead of two ninety-seven, it could be, what's the finish coat number, off the top of my head?
Forty grand or something.
I don't remember.
Forty, the finish coat was like twenty grand.
Okay, so if you get twenty, asbill's a ten, anyway, right, so you look at, so this could get whittled down to like forty or fifty.
Plus a holdback or something.
Yeah, and then, and then that sits there, cause it'll, and then you just extended your timeline. Without, in this, I'm looking way out in the future, so you get everything done within the timeline, then this, everything is on this.
Alright, so upon, as I understand, upon the binder goes down, then I could sell a lot. Once the binder's down, I could sell a lot, but the finish coat doesn't go on until the building's, well.
Till the whole subdivision's done.
No, you could sell a lot with it binded.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. But what this, he's saying, they, they want it to go through a winter also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you could still, you could sell it in the fall.
Now, you're going with wells, right? Or are you going with the town water?
I believe I might have the option to tap into the, uh, town, single taps.
Alright.
Yeah, single.
Just be assured that you need to have a water source before you can get a foundation permit. You gotta have an approved water source, either a well or the town, before you can do a foundation period.
Alright, yeah, but I think they're gonna let you do the.
Alright.
Tap time.
Service, yeah, service.
That sounds better.
From what I've heard, you know, I just.
Sounds good, okay, so you know what you're doing with this? Okay.
Yeah, after I read it three times.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it needs a little work.
Yeah.
Rather than say, we have established a letter of credit.
We have a draft.
And say, you can take the money if.
Yeah.
Alright, so you'll send me a corrected verbal email and I'll send it to him.
It's fine, I, yeah, I had to read it three times, but.
Okay.
This is good the way it is, or not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, if you'd like, I'll just check it over with Woody.
Yes, if you want.
Yeah, I think it's got a couple of.
And then give me an okay.
No, Bob, can you send, uh, whatever I have to do to the banker?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
Uh, sure.
And you don't need any of these?
No.
Not, not at this time, no.
Alright, so I'll, uh, I'll tell the bank a guy that, uh, you'll be in touch with him.
We'll be in touch with him as soon as I hear from Alan, Woody. Uh, before you go, did you get an update on Charlotte Parker? Because she's, wants to burn her house on the market as soon as possible.
Yeah, again, um, I tried to grab Woody, but he had left before, um, I had a chance to speak with him tonight, so.
Do you have her email or number? I can send her email to you, the Converse, but there's over twenty, twenty-one hundred and forty dollars in the account now.
Okay.
And what she wants to know is what the total cost for an asbill to be recorded, so she can sell the house.
Okay. Be my first conversation in the morning.
Okay, good.
And, uh, is there one small invoice with Carl that we need to?
Uh, yes, um.
Fix.
I don't know if I've got it to you or not.
I think there was one small invoice, Carl. Cause we still gotta take action on his landis disturbance permit.
I think I've got it at home, I don't think I brought that, unless you had it on the.
I left it with Denise last time.
Oh, here we go, uh, if this is correct, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and three cents?
That sounds right.
Look, look at this.
Yeah, that, that sounds right. I remember it was just about.
If this is an outdated, the top one, no? I'll need you to sign that, and if there isn't enough money, you need to submit a check.
Yeah.
Can I give you the check tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
For nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and three cents?
Three cents, yeah. Yeah, and then sign this bill, and I'll get that in the, uh, account with this other one tomorrow.
Alright, so I'll just, I'll get a check and bring it back in.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Bob, did you see this water report, water on, uh, King Street?
I was telling her about the, it's eight six, they want an eight eight and try connection.
That one's easy, but they wanna, the, the flow is pretty poor, it's like two hundred gallons per minute. So they want the, I think they want the Francis Abt tapping.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's supposed to be though.
Yeah.
You was, when, when you approved that.
Right.
I think you approved the stipulations of, I think.
Right, we did, yeah. The easement stair and all that, but there's a caveat in there, I guess there's some other stuff on King Street, so. Uh, and they want an updated water report, which is, cause it timed out. It's an O seven.
My plans are all good, December.
Supposedly, uh, the Hulu was at that meeting along with.
Okay, I've been done since the, the assembly.
The engineer or something, so they must be gonna get that information for them.
It's, it's a minor thing, yeah, it's just, you know, the, the data is so old that it's just gotta be updated. That's a nominal request.
I was just.
I was telling, you know where the return receipts and all the data that we did ages ago is filed in our office?
It should be, yeah, on that, I spoke, on this request here, this is the, um, the group for homestead. Okay, I spoke with three of the members of signature of this, and explained to whoever could process, um, and also to the clerk. So, um, what happened was a lot of folks weren't aware, but when I briefed them and explained to them that they're gonna be coming back in anyway.
Well, they were aware when we had the hearings, and I just wanna take a photocopy of the tear sheets and everything else.
Yeah.
And keep them on file.
Yeah, I, I think what they were concerned about was that, um, you know, cause one of the meetings, they were, thought they were gonna roll, and I was like, no, they got, they got a lot of work to do, preliminary work, so they'll be back.
Alright.
So I can get my check and come back in, but.
Yes.
Am I, I don't wanna hold you guys up.
The anxious way.
Oh, am I holding you guys up?
Do you need an escort to go back to your car tonight?
This isn't much of a change, they want a bigger.
We can work on that.
Yes.
You don't have to do, just do a sheet, just change the sheet of the.
Yeah, and add it to it.
They want a bigger, I know what.
Right, but it's the, it's the updated flow report is what they're looking for from O seven. You know, it's eight years old.
No, they want a bigger gate on.
Got that too, yeah, they want an eight inch plus the gate plus all the valves.
So they just have to change it one sheet.
Right, but they also want an updated report on the flows, from, cause the last one is O seven.
Oh, on the second sheet, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Minor stop, they're just gonna go out and test it.
Yeah, they can.
Alright, I'll hook up with the Wulas and get them to see what they're gonna do and present it to us. Alright, we need to post the next meeting now. Jim would like us to go over the memorandum of decision on four forty-one.
Yeah.
Of the, uh, thing, so we need to set up a meeting out of the first and third, uh, Tuesdays of the month. We wanna meet as soon as possible to discuss this, so.
Yeah, which.
Next week, can you, all of us.
Yeah, where is that?
Yeah, I'm available, I'm not going.
Give me a date, give me a date.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, next Tuesday.
Is that all set with me?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Tuesday, July seventh, or Tuesday, oh, wait, sorry, Tuesday.
No, next Tuesday is the thirtieth.
Tuesday, June thirty.
June thirtieth.
That's right, the thirtieth, I got a board of health meeting the thirtieth, uh, can we all make the thirtieth?
I can, I think.
Uh, Bob, that good for you?
Yeah, the thirtieth.
Alright, then we'll discuss that memorandum of decision on the thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then our next meeting would be the first Tuesday of, uh, July, now, is that, uh, July fourth?
That's on Saturday, Sunday.
July fourth?
Yeah.
It's a Saturday.
That's the seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
What, the seventh?
Yes, that's the second, uh.
Well, it's, oh, wait a minute, well, no, that's the first.
Oh, the first, right.
That's the first Tuesday.
That's the seventh?
Correct.
Alright, July seventh will be our first, and what's the third?
Uh, twenty-first.
Are we going to, uh, have a hiatus?
Usually we, we do, yeah.
Is it August that you take off?
I don't know if we can with all this stuff going on.
Right, we might not be able to.
We got the post one meeting?
Yeah, you gotta.
Post one, we'll do.
Alright, what's July, the third, uh, Tuesday in July?
Probably twenty-one.
To be fair to people, you know?
Alright, so those, those are the three dates, the June thirtieth, July seventh, and, uh, July twenty-first. Alright.
Okay. And you're in for?
Yeah, I wonder if I got the blueprint sound?
Yeah. Did the four Matthews, and this is the, for which one?
This is your ten picker. So this is a picture of the four A.
And you already looked at this?
We don't have.
Oh.
You don't have the plan that we talked about.
Which one?
This, this is the, yeah, I got my bearings a little bit after we talked, uh, this is the road plan, which.
Yeah, but I don't see the catch basin that we talked.
The catch basin, if you look on the big plan, which, it's got all sorts of crap on it.
I got my glasses now.
Uh, the catch basin is here, it's right in front of the house.
Let me see it. Alright.
So it's marked catch basin three.
Okay.
So, the engineer says the soil, cause the soil perks at two minutes an inch, less than two minutes an inch.
Oh, so you gotta put two ca.
Well, this is a, this is a structure for sewer.
That's sewer.
So, the cat, so there's a catch basin here, and it's an infiltrating basin, um, and since the soil perks so well. I'm told, I'm told it won't overflow.
And that's on the right, right-hand side? Are you going to have a crown in this roadway, or are you gonna pitch everything to that side?
We're pitching everything to that side.
This is, yeah, but.
You can just give it a bum.
Oh, okay.
You didn't tie the J, we clocked the J up on this.
Sign, sign here, right up here.
Yeah, so Jay pointed out that.
Yeah, that's yours, the nine.
That goes down at the.
Did you say nine?
Is gonna end up being kind of a.
Sign right in there, yeah.
Because, you know, you're within your, your two hundred feet of the river, so, you know, even though, even though it's an improvement on the current conditions.
No, I need to turn that in with this.
That might be difficult to work on.
That's true, exactly, you approve.
Those don't work without an overflow.
So Jay's suggestion is we could have a second infiltrator basin here, so if this overflows, it could overflow into another one.
Yep.
Cause when I went to Jack, she sent me a Mason.
It's not what we talked about. I don't know, I'll talk to Bob.
Yeah, I don't know, sure, I accept this, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Carl.
Yep, give me a call when you start. I'll get in touch with the bank and I'll email you.
Feeds down to here, is that right?
Into that catch basin.
So do you think that's a hard permit to get?
Yeah, um.
I don't think so.
What permit?
You can make it an infiltrator, but it needs an overflow.
Uh, we'll work together.
Instead of coming up out of the ground.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alan.
Cause we're gonna have a trouble, they've had trouble there, that's why, he was, he was actually the foreman years ago, he, he put a catch basin in there.
Yeah.
So.
Is there, so Jay wants to, is there a good time that he can meet with you tomorrow?
You know, I've gone over this with him so much. Yeah, I've gone over this.
So they, they just put a, an addition on this.
Let's see what he thinks about.
This house over here, and everything's running down, uh, the house on the corner, you know.
What we had said was to come out of that catch basin you put in like forty years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And then come up and put it up to here and put an open throat catch bas, in the swale.
In the swale, that's what we were talking about.
Now, what they wanna do is just put an infiltrator catch basin in.
And hope that everything percolates down in from up there?
With no overflow, see, I'm not.
Well, but the swale continues, right, the swale continues down the road here.
No, it, it can't, it can't continue down the swale, there's, there's no swale, it's all hot dog.
Right, and this is very narrow.
Yeah.
Down here, and people are parking, trying to get off-road because it's so narrow, and but the water, everything goes down, and, and I'm afraid that it's gonna go right into this guy's foundation.
But this is drawn so that there's a, I mean, am I misunderstanding that, that this, this spot here is, is not a continuation of the two-foot swale?
No, it's not. But you can't have a two-foot swale down through here, it's people's yards, they're already established, and the road width is established.
Right, well, it's twelve-foot road width and we're only gonna pave sixteen.
No, I'm talking the existing.
Okay.
Where are you gonna, you know what I mean, if that infiltration state of basin overflows. There's no place, it's just gonna sheet on the existing road, down to Main Street.
Yeah.
We went through this with him.
Okay, so, I'm disappointed to hear that.
Right, we would rather have an underground piping right down to there, and then that goes across into the river.
Okay, and this is, so this would be a permit that you'd be able to get from CONCON? I mean, our, our engineer seems to think that that would be a, difficult to get, because it's within two hundred feet of the river.
Yeah, but you still apply for them.
Yeah.
We wouldn't apply for it. You're doing the upgrading.
So who's, who's responsible for the cross-checking of the implementation of that open throat? Is that our, is, is that was, that was one of your requirements, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna sign off too, don't you?
I don't mind, but I don't mind the infiltrator basin, but it needs an overflow pipe.
Okay.
So it has to go into that.
So is that into the, now, what, where did that plan come from? Is that the change plan that we requested?
This is, this plan actually incorporates water, sewer, and roadwork. Uh, this version has the water and sewer removed, but unfortunately, it's so small that we can't.
Can't read it.
We need a magnifying glass to really get a handle on it. There's an electronic version out there, but.
So, so here's, here's what we can do, Bob, you, you have a signature that you, that's required, you're in charge of that department to get that in there. I agree with your thought process, okay, so what we can do is, uh, two things. One, uh, you need a copy of this plan, or you need that open throat in there, okay? Upon your approval, you can submit a, uh, a single sketch, and we can give Bob the authority for both signatures, for his department and our department, upon you bringing that in, and you guys agreeing in the field with Bob, both Bobs. And that way, when that's done.
What do you think, Bob, I just don't.
I'd like to see an outlet.
Yeah, it needs some sort of.
We're not talking that much money, you're ripping it anyway.
Cause all this is gonna be paved now.
Exactly.
Hey, I'm not, I'm not arguing the other side.
I've talked to these neighbors down there, they're concerned.
Yeah, they get a lot of water now, even with the gravel.
Yep.
Make the drawing happen.
Is, is Larry doing it?
Yeah, 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 we want Larry to do it.
So he'll do it, he's gonna see it right away.
This with Larry.
Yeah, so I don't know if, I don't know if something got forgotten or misunderstood.
And another thing, and I don't mean to.
Yep.
Pick on you tonight because I respect you, but I've asked Jay.
Yep.
I don't know how many times, if that fence is on the right of way, and he always says he didn't know. Just like he didn't know whose lot that was, which was, he knows whose it was. Now, and that's not your fault that the fence is on the right of way.
Yeah.
But we can't have this either. So, I can, I can do that, I can tell the people to get the fence off the right of way, but I have to know. Is this a survey, is this a survey plan, or you don't?
I wouldn't, I'm not gonna call it a survey plan, right, we surveyed this lot, this lot, this lot, and then I'm told that the connections here were drawn from other surveys that were done here and here.
Yeah.
And one thing, Bob, I'm at, I'm at a fence that's up to you.
Yeah.
That's a blind spot, and when we add three more with two cars each, trying to get out of that end.
Because I talked, well, I talked to, that's why I was concerned about that, and Jay was saying he don't know, but he's been saying that to me, and I wished I'd have pursued it more.
Okay.
We're gonna have to look into that, because the fire chief was concerned with the fire truck getting in that.
Trying to make that circumference down.
Yeah. So, so we may have to ask this gentleman to move his fence back a little bit, and.
No, move it off the right of way. No, move it off the right-of-way.
Well, right, but we need to know how far that is, right? You can't just say, we're gonna move it, and we'll, we'll put it where we think it's right, right? We have to be able to say, well, we're gonna move it two feet, or we're gonna move it three feet, or whatever the number is.
Right, so, so we get some, you have some work to do, and we've got some field work to do as an inspection. So here's what I would recommend again from the, from the planning board perspective, okay, is that upon receipt and confirmation and approval from the two Bobs here for us. Okay, on that catch basin, that open throat, the fence for the road for the right-of-way and the line of sight, okay? Then the building permit can be signed off because it's gotta be done first. We, we have to know what's going on, so, but they, we can approve it so that they can sign it in the field once that's done, so you won't have to come back to a meeting.
Right, and normally, whenever they do any survey for your lots down there, they use the benchmarks up on the main area on both ends to get the proper calculations of each lot line. They probably already know where the benchmark is up there.
They probably do.
No, there's a pin here, this in the fence.
Yep.
So that's why I knew, I figured the fence was on the town right-of-way. There's a pin stuck right here.
You can see it right in the corner, okay.
But I don't know where.
The fence supposed to be, you mean the iron pin in the ground?
There's an iron pin right in the fence.
Oh, yeah, I think I know what you mean.
Yeah.
I think I know what you mean.
So, that, that talk, that kind of set me, tipped me off that the fence must be on town right-of-way.
All right, now, so, here, let me.
And that's a bad spot, that needs to be widened.
But I definitely agree with Bob, there should be an outlet on that.
Yeah, I don't know if the infiltrator will be.
But at least try to get a conservation approval for the street.
So do we need the conservation approval before we get this plan approved by you guys?
Well, I would think so.
Yeah, because that's gonna dictate, although they signed this, though, I wonder if they were aware.
Well, that's just a building permit, right? That's, that only deals with this lot, and, you know, so they take a quick look and say, there's no wetlands there, fine, do what you like. So we have fence location, we need an outlet. Outlet for, for the catch basin.
I mean, this has been going on for three months, four months.
Don't throw mine in. Well, but we've, you know, so, so fence, I mean, the fence, the outlet for the, the other thing I wanted to just give you guys a short update, there's the permit, what was the other thing you guys wanted? There's the catch basin, the fence.
The open throat.
Uh, well, it's the open throat catch basin.
Or, or a, um, in, um, what, what's the catch basin you were calling it?
Infiltrator?
Infiltrator, but with an outlet, you know, to, to another source.
Okay, so either do the infiltrator with an outlet.
Yeah, you have to have an outlet.
Or do an open throat.
Right.
Okay. Just give me some, uh.
I think the infiltrator will go better with conservation.
Yep.
Okay, so you wanna apply that motion, so we can get him moving?
I mean, I'm not even on the agenda, so, I'm just, I mean, I just want to sign off, so. I didn't realize I had to be on the agenda.
You know, I don't like holding up anyone, but.
But, well, we get, we gotta get that cleared, right?
Yeah. I don't like holding up, but it's not getting, it's been three months we've been talking.
So you, you want to back in the meeting to review this, or you wanna, you wanna do this in the field? Because we need something.
Should come back in the meeting, if something happens to me.
Okay, how soon do you think you can get that squared away?
I'll find out, we'll get on the agenda.
Okay.
We'll email, all right?
Good.
Was there any decisions made at your meeting yesterday on?
No, so, yeah, so I wanted to give you guys an update, and we are trying our hardest to stick with, you know, what we promised, which was that, you know, we'll do the road, and we'll do sewer, and we'll try to work with them on a water line.
Yeah.
And we haven't had success yet, and at this point, I'm not super, if I had to bet, I wouldn't bet that we're gonna be able to do it.
Really? Why? What are they requiring, requiring?
So, the first plan that, the first plan, we first talked to water and sewer, they said, draw us a plan with sewer and wells.
Yeah.
So we paid the engineer, we went and saw them on June first, and they said, we're not gonna approve this, you know, we'll think about it, come back in three weeks. We got an email a week later that said, your project is stalled until you bring us a plan that involves a water line. So we went back to the engineer, we made whatever changes, you know, we sat with Tom for about two hours, we made whatever changes he wanted. We presented that plan just the other day, and they said, oh, all right, well, this is a good plan, and I said, well, just as I said three weeks ago, this is, this is, actually, we thought this was gonna be an eighty thousand dollar water line. It turns out it's gonna be a ninety-six thousand dollar wa- water line, and we said, we, we can't afford it. And we said, you know, we told you this on June first, and you said you could provide us with some help. Your first offer of help was four thousand dollars in valves. But we're apart by sixty-six thousand, like, if we wanna put in wells, it's, you know, thirty thousand dollars versus ninety-six to put in a water line. And they said, well, we'll give you four grand. So when we're back yesterday, they said, well, we'll waive your system connection fee, and we'll let you use plastic pipes, that'll save you another twenty thousand. So, all right, but we're still apart by, you know, whatever it is, thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Well, how many other houses on the street that have water?
We're, we think that in the future, there will be three new ones that want water.
Right.
And the existing two homes on the street already have town water.
So why is that?
Didn't we just bring a line in there?
No, they just have a service line.
Both have, they have, both have long service lines.
Oh, I see.
So, I mean, there are a few pieces to what water and sewer wants, right? Not only do they want the water line, but they want it upgraded at both ends for what Gardner and Main Street will be in the future.
From an eight to a twelve, which is significant pressure.
Right, so, so we're gonna go from an eight to a twelve inch, right? That would be upgraded at the Gardner Street end, they wanna go from a six to an eight inch at the Main Street end.
What's the length?
It's almost eight hundred feet. I, I tried to explain to them an example of, like, Fairway Drive, I said, look, they've got about eight hundred feet of water and sewer, but they've got, what, seven, eight lots to help pay for that? We don't have that. We have, we have, you know, three lots.
What's, does the town have a plan to upgrade that?
Years ago, Metcalf and Eddie did it, yes, in seventy-eight.
No, I mean, what, on their future plan?
They didn't mention that. I mean, it was clearly thought about at some point because the gate that's at the end of Pecker Lane now is a four-way gate.
Yeah, okay.
So at some point, they thought, this might be a good idea. I didn't see the detail of the, of the valves at the other end. So we went to them, and, and whenever they say they can't afford to help us anymore, we say, okay, well, can we talk about a sewer with wells plan? And they hem and har, and, you know, they, they tell us, why don't you build the house with, why don't you charge more for the house, why don't you get a better realtor, why don't you use, use paints and a wallpaper? I mean, there's a thousand suggestions, but nothing that really fixes it. So, so we're apart by, I, I think it's forty thousand, by their math, it's thirty thousand, they said, how do you propose we close the gap? I said, look, I'll split the difference with you, if you, you know, give me fifteen thousand, and we'll do it today. They said, no, they needed to think about it. I went and did some math, and I said, look, if you will sign off on it today and sign our building permits, we'll do it for seven. And they said, no.
Seven what?
Seven thousand. I said, seven thousand additional, and we'll do it if you do it today.
On top of what?
On top of the concessions they've made, but the concessions they've made aren't really out of their pocket, right?
Okay, okay, I, I see where you're going with that, but run those numbers by me again here, because we're talking a lot of different numbers.
Sure.
So, so the proposed project you said was how much?
Ninety-six thousand.
Okay, and you're willing to pay ninety-six thousand?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, right, so, so the proposed project is ninety-six thousand, if we put in wells, it costs us thirty. Now, I'm willing to pay more than thirty if I'm gonna get a water line, right?
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna pay sixty-six thousand more than thirty.
Okay, I get that, okay, so.
I can pay fifteen, twenty more.
And the wells, is that just drilling?
Yeah.
Okay, so you get a drilling?
No, no, the well, the well quote includes piping to the house, a tank, bunch of other stuff.
And how deep?
Uh, I think they're gonna go, I forget how many feet.
Roughly? Six, seven, eight?
I don't remember.
Who's doing them?
Clearwater Wells in Maine, out of Rollins, which remain or something. I have the email here with a quote.
Wells are always gonna be cheaper, but they, you have issues with wells, you gotta figure in a pump replacement, an, an extra holding tank, depending on the depth, storage, and then quality of the water.
It's true, if the water quality is awful.
System and a filter system you're gonna be putting on and.
I understand, but, but we've inflated that cost, right? I mean, the, the quote that I'm about to find on email is for, I think, fifty-five hundred, and they said, oh, you'll never get it done for that price. I said, okay, let's assume it's twice that for each lot. That's where we gained our thirty grand there. So we're already kinda factoring in that we're gonna have to buy a whole bunch of extra stuff if we wanna do wells, and we're still apart by sixty-six thousand. And like I said, I'm willing to pay beyond the thirty, but I, they, we can't seem to meet in the middle, and, and they won't entertain the discussion of wells and, and sewer. So it makes, so it makes it hard for us to fulfill what we said we'd do for you guys.
Well, I, I can't speak for the Water and Sewer Board. But we, we do have, you know, we, we get correspondence from them all the time, we, we work very well together as a team, so, um, you know, I don't know if a representative could come in here at the same time or, or something like that. But it seems to me that there must have been, when they priced out this project, if the town was gonna do it, then obviously it would cost them that much, okay? And if you're gonna go in and do it now, and they're, instead of doing it in, what was it, eight, and going to twelve, twelve-inch main? Going into, so, they're probably gonna ask you for the upgrade because you're adding.
Yep.
And then for, you know, at least half the price, I imagine, that's, but again, I can't speak for that board, but I don't know what that number is.
Half the price of.
Of whatever that.
What, the whole project? If they met us halfway, we would sign that in a minute. But my understanding from our discussions are that they're limited, where they can't pay for any labor, all they can pay for is parts. And we've exchanged parts numbers, and they agree that our parts numbers are accurate. But we said, okay, then it won't quite be half, but just pay for our parts, and they said, we can't do that. Okay.
Okay, well, again, I, I can't speak for that board, but maybe, uh.
No, 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 I'm just trying to give you guys an update and let you understand, right? So now they put us off to the end of July, and it's unclear what will be at that point. We're gonna drill a well. Right? We're gonna drill a well so that we understand what's going on there, because the last thing they said to us is, you're gonna have trouble drilling a well, and we'll gamble that you'll have that trouble.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds hockey talk, eh?
I'm just, I mean, the meeting's not recorded, but that's what I got told. When I came back in and said, look, if you just give me seven thousand on top of what you suggested.
When's your next meeting with them?
End of June, July.
Okay, why don't you request a meeting before then?
Oh, Tom's going out of town on vacation, and they didn't want to meet before then.
When's that?
Tom leaves Friday, he won't be back until thirteenth or seventeenth or something in July.
Can he get in before Friday?
What's that?
Can he get in before Friday?
I think he's actually off Friday, so we'd have to try to catch him tomorrow, the next day. I don't know what his schedule's on.
Worth a shot. See if he can figure that out.
Notice to, to post the meeting.
What, what would I ask him? I mean, we, they, they spent plenty of time with us, I mean, we discussed for a long time.
He won't do anything without the board approving it either.
No, I understand that, uh, just maybe to get some clarity.
He's been accommodating, right? We met him a few weeks ago, we sat for more than two hours in his office.
I would imagine he would be, yeah.
To, to get a full sense of what they want on the plan, so, you know, from our perspective, we're like, jeez, we've, we've paid six thousand dollars in engineering fees just for the privilege of sitting down to discuss with you. Now, you know, you're telling us you, you can't even meet us remotely close to where we need to be, and we, and we posited that upfront. We said, look, we're pretty far away here, we're gonna need some significant help, and, you know, this is where we're willing to go, and we're not even close.
Well.
And so where we ended up was, you know, was being, me being told, you're gonna have trouble drilling wells, and we'll just risk that. You'll come back to us at the end of July, and you'll, and you'll like our offer.
All right.
Okay.
One more thing.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Yeah. We need to comply with this request from the Board of Selectmen and Debbie Webster, who's working with the board to do a permitting.
Oh, okay.
Report, and we only got to July seventh or sixth.
Yeah, I'm all right, I'm, I'm busy this.
We need to talk about this, and you need to look through this before our next meeting on the thirtieth.
Apparently there's confusion.
Yeah, I've got a car at home.
All right. And then, just reading it from the record.
So we can make a plan that you guys are, you know, happy about.
We have a, a letter addressed to the board.
Well, yeah, we told them what we wanted two months ago.
Okay, guys, ready on this one over here? This is, this is from John Carrigan, this is on sixty King Street. It, it was sent over to the.
Thank you.
I believe the building inspector, uh, trying to see who else would have gotten this. And as far as the planning aspect was, apparently there are some structures that are on this man's property from the next-door neighbor, who, according to this letter, is Mr. Burkhauser. And what would concern the planning board is, I don't know if you recall, but we granted an access, I believe it was up Juniper, to go up into here for the fire turnaround, which has dramatically changed at the moment from what it was. So we may need just to pull that plan and see what was approved, and also to have the fire chief take a look, because there, there are some, those temporary structures up there.
Was that a single lot subdivision?
Yeah, it's a sing, it, not a single lot subdivision, it, it was an access through the back way, because his frontage is on King Street, but he chose to come in off of Juniper.
Was that Daniel's?
Daniel's on the other side of it.
The other side of it.
Yeah, this is, um, he's way on the other side.
Yeah, I do remember a turnaround that we, yeah.
But now that, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful property, but it, there are some, some changes that occurred up in there in that access, plus there's some, at the time that I was there, looking at some abandoned vehicles right in the right-of-way. They're just like parked on the side, there's no plates on them, and a couple of trucks. So I'm, I'm not sure what they're doing in there for access, but, but we should probably, as, as a board, take a look at that. I'm not sure, I mean, you can't have structures on someone else's property, and this letter addresses what, what the owner's looking for, just the removal and the restoration of the land back to what it was, some trees and grass.
Almost civil matter, though.
That's what I was just thinking.
That's the civil matter part, right, so they're addressing that. What we're addressing is the access, and then the building inspector has the zoning issue with abandoned vehicles and whatever else is on there. But planning's only concern at this point would be the access that we approved and has it changed? Because it was a full right-of-way up with a turnaround, and I think there's a structure in there now where the turnaround was.
So we need to take a ride up and take a look?
Yeah, we need to plan first, take a look, see what it is, map it out. So, you know, maybe it didn't change, I mean, but a lot has changed since we approved it, so we need to just take a look at that, and this will take its course. And there's a plan with it, but this doesn't show the, what it is, so. Anyway, this is the last thing I got.
The only thing I'm gonna post for June thirtieth is the memorandum of decision and also the permitting, that's the only two things I'll put on that meeting.
All right.
All right, Bob?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
I can motion to adjourn at eight fifty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shall the vote be announced? Thank you for watching at home, planning board meeting adjourned for June twenty-third. Good night.